No, I didn't.
Okay, how can I call this regular meeting of the Nevada State Council to? Make it a little fall.
Thank you.
Here.
Dan Nielsen.
Here.
Steve Skaggs.
Here.
Sandy Eric.
Here.
Can I get a motion for the approval of the agenda? There's one small change. Henry had solicited clean. Energy week, but it's misspelled in the agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Please vote. Agenda has been approved. Moving on for the approval for the consent agenda.
Eighty-three, second.
Discussion. Please vote. Approved. Like I said earlier, moving on to the next item, we have Clean Energy Week proclamation. I've signed that and it's included in the packet. Now's the time for the public forum. It's time to say some comments from the public on topics of city business other than those listed on the agenda. No action may be taken. I have one card from Belinda.
This card.
Well, it's two. Yeah. We can do both.
I have a lot of voice calling me. My name is Belinda Scovone Martin. I live at twelve oh four Ninth Street, Nevada, Iowa. And I have lived at that address for thirty-eight years. Over half my life. I have been dealing with mortgage companies that have been trading. A mortgage that is no longer in the investment training group that they have. And I filed with a lawyer. Acquired the title action because they were just moving it around. And I didn't know where it was, and I couldn't get refinanced. I couldn't get anything done. I took it to court. March or June of twenty-two. And it was scheduled for a default judgment. January thirtieth. Of twenty twenty-three. One of the defendants transferred it again. On January twenty-fifth. To another investor. Which was after the due date to do a transfer or do anything to the trial before the trial, the default judgment. They were beyond the date of December twenty-eighth. Two thousand twenty-two. They came up. They had no right to do that because they were past a new line, but there was a new judge. Reasonably important. First, no, there was an old judge. Not old, but an older judge, and he said, go ahead and do what you gotta do to look around to see if you still wanna. Be a defendant now, or you could still wanna let it move on to the default judgment. And that's what happened. They let it move on to the default judgment. No, they did not let it move on to default judgment, but that we were still fighting resistance on it. My lawyer became sick during that period of time. And then they moved the trial from the default trial, summary judgment default trial on my part. To. On their part, I'm sorry. They were the defendants in the case. They moved a new trial date to September twenty-eighth. Of twenty twenty-three. At that time. Before that, my attorney had gotten sick. I couldn't find him. And then I got a hold of him a little bit. And then I couldn't find him again. He wouldn't answer his phone. I didn't know where he was. And then it was getting closer and closer to the September twenty-eighth date. And I tried again to get a hold of him, and at that time, I got a hold of his fiance. On her cell phone number that I found. And she told me he was gonna have a fellow attorney put a motion in because of his illness to hold still until November thirtieth. Of twenty twenty-three. And then that he did that. The judges gave him until November thirtieth. To have him come back after his illness, and he had to have time to recover from what he had. He had. Cancer, pneumonia, and a cracked vertebrae, and he was almost eighty years old. And so they gave him some time to heal and resume the case. I didn't hear from him again. Because nobody was answering the phone. I couldn't find him. And I finally left a message. Around the fourth or fifth of November, maybe the sixth. At his home, and so I thought he had gotten out. He got home, okay? And so I got a return message from his daughter. She picked up the message. And she called me. And on the ninth of November and told me her dad had passed away. So I had to try to find another lawyer. I couldn't. I talked to over two hundred and fifty lawyers in the state of Iowa. Because this is a very complex issue. And it's the older attorneys that knew the old-fashioned property conveyance. Are gone or retired. The newer lawyers know the computer end of it. But not the two parts together to make it a legal transfer of conveyance of property. So then the bank took it as we're just gonna keep rolling along. And I had a judge who was very new. And not familiar with the issue. And every time I tried to ask her something, all she did was tell me, get a lawyer, get a lawyer. The spank, they also filed a foreclosure while this was going on. And then the judge decided to go ahead and because there was only one defendant plaintiff or defendant left standing. She would combine the two cases. For trial, both the foreclosure and the title deed. And I had put out all the documents I needed to put out plus fifty-nine exhibits showing that this thing has not been. Eligible for transfer because they're not in the investor group anymore. And it has not been eligible for transfer since January thirteen of thirteen. But they were doing it. They kept transferring it, and I kept. They would come and try to foreclose on me and then make a catch-up plan that I could go ahead and catch it up with. And before that, one of the owners, before they sold it to this one. I had to go into bankruptcy because I didn't know what to do, and they presented the bankruptcy court.
I'm sorry, Belinda. The time's up. This doesn't sound like an issue that the city is gonna be able to assist you with.
Not this part, okay?
So thank you for your time.
Well, you have another card there.
We gave you double time.
I didn't know that. I do have another very important issue concerning. I'm also being harassed by public safety at the same time. When I'm trying to deal with, I had everything perfect, and then I had to deal with a new issue.
Belinda, I'll talk with you after the meeting. Steve? You have a card? Shane?
I just had to one really quick question. And one other comment. Early this spring, city was out and looked at my water stops and my tore-up gravel, not gravel, it's gravel now. Concrete. That I worked for about three years to get construct, come out and do a half-assed repair job. And then the city was out and said they were gonna take care of and fix it this spring finally. And nothing happened all summer. Then I asked about it in a meeting or two ago, and the next morning they came out and chopped off the curb stops, which whatever, it doesn't matter to me. But the concrete still hasn't been addressed, and I'm just curious where that. Because I was told it was gonna get taken care of kind of like right after the. Hydrants were flushed this spring.
I'll talk to our streets department tomorrow and see what they can do to get that fixed for you or replaced.
Okay. And then I know at the last meeting. A question had arisen about who was on the Nevada Foundation? And we got crickets in here. Which is really disappointing. When Jordan, you're on the board of directors of the Nevada Foundation, and so was Brenda, and Brenda actually said she didn't have any idea and couldn't help us. So it doesn't really, it doesn't really show a lot of transparency when we ask questions like that and you ignore us or don't, you know, can't help, don't know anything.
So yeah, the city administrator, whoever's sitting in that position. The director for NEDC and then the mayor, whoever the mayor is, all three of us do have a sitting position on it. The other board of directors.
You could have said that last time. You just sat here like you didn't know anything.
The other board of directors are made up of various entities.
No, I dug it up. I did finally find it, but it's just, it's really disappointing when three of you are in here and don't know anything about it. It doesn't really show a lot of transparency. Right? That's all I had tonight.
Shane, for the concrete, are you talking about the laundromat or by your home?
Yeah, by the laundromat. I mean, it's down there off the alley. When Ontrack was down there, I'm sorry. Ontrack and Construct both. Made a mess of concrete that I had down there.
Like where the alley meets I?
It's on the north side.
On the north side.
Okay.
At the alley.
Okay, I know where you're talking.
Where the gap meters are. It was, it was cracked before. I will admit that completely. But when Ontrack was out there mashing the pavement, trying to get the mud off their bucket, now it's all heaved and busted to hell. And then they came back after three years of playing, they came back and put like a strip. And that's all turned to gravel now, and that's what we've done a year ago.
Okay. You, Jordan, can you include me in whatever response to you?
Yeah, I'll let you know.
Appreciate it.
Yep. Any other comments for the public forum? Seeing none, public forum is closed. Moving on to item number six. It's resolution number seventeen, a resolution accepting the nineteenth Street Trail Project Division Two is complete.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
I know I've asked, are we gonna have any type of more visible delineation between the road and trail? Out there for the portion that's right along?
Yeah, we've looked at a couple of different ideas, the reflective bollards that are, I mean, they're very flimsy. We're just trying to look at different solutions on it. If you have any suggestions, I'd be more willing to get into it, but. Yeah, it's that area more on the south side. There needs to be something in place there so you can kind of tell.
Especially in winter time when snow starts blowing around.
Yeah, and I, there was someone parked on there over by the hospital last week too. So, I mean, there needs to be something there to show that you can't park on that.
I don't know if it's a cone type thing or paint or whatever it is, but. Feel like something needs to be done.
Yeah, I know last summer, last winter, we had a lot of issues with somebody's cutting that corner way sharp, and then comes spring, it was all torn up. It's only matter of time till it. Wracks the bike path too.
Shane.
You're talking about nineteenth street. I can I give a quick suggestion as nineteenth street, if you're trying to get that cleaned up and everything for better. I know you don't, probably don't like it, but a lot of people running it out of nineteenth street on snowmobiles and having. Stuff left behind is definitely an injury. Problem, you know, if it doesn't get picked up, whether it's.
Are you referring to that grate that was there for a while?
No, I'm talking to chunks of concrete. Pieces of steel, I mean, just anything that's out there that's not grass or a sign sticking up marking a pulver.
So just saying it's a debris that's.
Any debris left over, somebody's gonna hit it on the snowmobile.
Yeah.
And I know you don't like the riding out there, but they do it anyway. They're not all from there. They come in and out of town, nineteenth street is a place where they come.
That's, that might be, that might be the area that they're allowed to. I can't remember what we, what we passed, but.
Well, I think it stays laws after there's an inch.
Yeah, no, I'm saying there's like, there's a certain path that we approved as the council approved that they could, they could ride on. Nineteenth might be one of those, so we'll have to double check and make sure that. We'll clean all that stuff up.
Somebody is thinking about making sure this stuff is cleaned up so somebody, you know, kids ride, old people ride, I mean, everybody rides. You know, you don't want somebody getting hurt out there on something that should have just been picked up.
Yeah, I agree. Any other discussion on this item? So? Moving on to item seven. Pay request number six from nineteenth Street Trail Project Division Two for construct and the amount of sixteen thousand four hundred eighty-four dollars and thirty-one cents. This includes the release. Of retainage for the payment thirty days.
Move to approve, second.
Any discussion on this? Council, please vote. Approved. Item eight. Approved amendments, master agreement, nineteenth street, nineteenth Street Trail Project, increasing maximum fee by twenty-one hundred dollars.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion on this? Council, please vote. Approved. Item nine, approved pay request number forty for wastewater treatment improvements, phase three from Boomerang Corp. in the amount of zero dollars.
Move to approve.
Second. Any discussion? Please vote.
Henry.
Nothing yet. Yeah, it shows all five. Just to eliminate the suspense, it was approved.
There it goes.
Item ten, approved change order number two for West Indian Creek Project, SRF Project A from. RW Excavating Solutions LC to extend project completion date to September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Please vote. Approved. Item eleven, approved change order number three for West Indian Creek, SRF Project A from RW Excavating Solutions LC in the amount of fifty-nine thousand five hundred dollars.
Eighty-three.
Second.
Any discussion? Please vote. Okay, approved. Item twelve, approved recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission regarding the site plan for Casey's General Store at five nineteen Lincoln.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
This looks like a complete tear down and rebuild. Is that correct?
Correct, yeah.
We know, are they closing any other stores in town and keeping two in town, or we got three now?
Ryan can probably answer that a little bit better than I can. What I asked Ryan to talk with him about was to close the, they are planning on closing the one on Lincoln Way, but we asked them to close that and pull the tanks out of, out of it as well. I do not know what they plan to do with that building afterwards, if they're planning on selling it or what, but we just asked them to remove the tanks on it and make sure that there wasn't that issue moving forward. But Ryan should be back in here shortly, and he might be able to answer some of those questions for you. Any other discussion? Please vote. Approved. Item thirteen, ordinance number ten seventy-three, an ordinance amending the Nevada Code of Ordinances by repealing chapter twenty-eight, Nevada City Community Center Board, first reading.
Move to approve. Second.
Any discussion?
Could you just explain why? Because that sounds like a negative thing, and it really isn't.
There's really two boards, and the board that's being dissolved never meets. The board that meets, they meet on a regular basis. They are the ones that typically make all the decisions and do everything for the senior center. Karen and Aaron met with them, was it in August that you met with them? Yeah, and talked with them about it, and they're in agreement that because they make all the decisions, that there was really no point in having that other board anymore.
Thank you.
What's the name of the one that's actually acting?
It's the Senior Community. Board, that's essentially the same thing, yeah.
They in the code is the same thing?
I don't know. No, I don't believe that they, they're like a. Informal board that meets, but. They have access to all of the trusts and everything that are available, so they're able to talk with Karen and work through any issues and make changes to anything and approve. Their budget side of things as well.
Thank you.
Yep. Any other discussion?
Well, I'm not positive that it's answering your question, but I worked on that building. Helps get it going, and I worked on it, and I'm guessing. There was a senior group kind of countywide that did some planning and fundraising for it. And they helped some ownership towards it. I mean, there was funding coming in from the county, but it's a city facility, and we put together a city board of residents to run it. I'm guessing that it's kind of the informal preliminary board that existed before the senior center existed, and then. When we adopted it, the cities that we provide snow removal and custodial. That we put a city board, that's just a guess, but there was, there was kind of a big group of people that helped put that together. And they operated it independently for a while, and it became apparent immediately. And it will probably operate better using our resources. And it became powerful. That's just a guess.
Sounds good.
Please vote. Approved. Item fourteen, there's been a change on. We're not going to take action on this tonight. But we are gonna have some discussion regarding the wastewater facility, so where did you wanna? Yeah, so everything in the agreement essentially is finalized except for the financial side of things, the amount of money that Burke is going to be providing for the allocation of. Of. Space that they're for the discharging, and so we're, we're working on those two numbers, and there is a slight difference. It's about five hundred thousand dollars in difference, so we're, we're working through that, and. If you want to talk about bills, that essentially changes the bill amount. It adds an extra two dollars per month for every tier essentially. If it goes down to that lower amount that Burke will be providing. And so we've, Karen has been working on the rates, and we've ran through several. Several different scenarios, and if I would be more than happy to kind of share those if you guys are interested in hearing them. I know that we've put something out in our Nevada. We plan on putting out more material on Facebook and other social media events. That way, people are aware of it because it is the plan to have that ordinance. Start next council meeting for the first reading. So the only different, the only thing is, is there's two different scenarios that I would be reading off of, so if you guys want to hear those, I'd be more than happy to share that. So for those who utilize and use two thousand gallons per month. They would be seeing around a three dollar and seventy-five cent increase on their sewer portion of the bill. We're not going to be increasing the water. It's just the sewer. If we go for the lower amount, the increase would be five dollars and forty-five cents per month, and that would be for the two thousand gallons. For five thousand gallons. It would be nine dollars and ninety cents for the higher amount, and for the lower amount, it would be eleven dollars and ninety cents. Ten thousand gallons, twenty dollars and fifteen cents, the lower amount would be twenty-two dollars and sixty-five cents. Eighteen thousand gallons a month, it'd be an increase of thirty-six dollars and fifty-five cents. For eighteen thousand gallons on the lower amount, it's thirty-nine dollars and eighty-five cents. For twenty-five thousand gallons. It would be an increase of fifty dollars and ninety cents. And for the lower, lower portion, it would be fifty-four dollars and ninety cents. And then if you want to go look into your thirty thousand gallon of usage, that would be a sixty-one dollar and fifteen cent increase, and then for the lower amount, it would be sixty-five dollars and sixty-five cents.
What's the average residential, excuse me, average residential use?
The average is around twenty-five hundred, so you're looking, you're looking at about a four dollar and twenty-five cent, five dollar increase. If it's the. First amount, if it's the lower amount, then it'd be probably around a seven dollar increase for that twenty-five hundred gallons.
And you're saying that's how much the total bill would go up, not the rate that the bill would go up, correct?
That would be the.
Two thousand gallons.
That would be.
My total would go up three dollars and seventy-five.
Your total would go up there, so for an example. For someone that has two thousand gallons, uses two thousand gallons, their total bill would be about ninety dollars and twenty-four cents. That would be for water and sewer. For five thousand gallons, it would be a hundred and forty-five dollars and thirty-four cents. And these are all of the, the lower amount that I was talking about, which is the higher amount of those, those two scenarios that I was referring to. Ten thousand would be two hundred and forty-four dollars and seventy-four cents. Eighteen thousand gallons would be four hundred and three dollars and seventy-eight cents. Twenty-five thousand gallons would be five hundred and forty-two and ninety-four cents, and then thirty thousand would be six hundred and forty-two and thirty-four cents.
And that's, is that specifically the, basically the rate for the gallon usage? Are there gonna be other like straight?
That, that includes everything.
Added on or anything?
So the fees are included in these amounts that I shared with you.
So that, what you just said is the only increase we're doing.
Correct.
Okay.
We have done a previous construction charge, had a flat fee that was added on months ago.
Yeah, so there's a debt minimum, a debt per thousand, operating and maintenance per thousand, and then operating and maintenance minimum base fee. And so all of those are included in those rates that I shared with you. And so all of those are included in tho- those rates that I shared with you, that rate increase.
Okay, I thought there was a separate fee, just a flat fee that started a couple months ago, it's not for that.
No, there's a ten dollar one that we implemented, I think it was a year ago or two years ago. And that's being replaced from ten dollars to eight dollars and ninety cents.
Is there a way, um, that we can have like on our website where people can go in and like have a calculator or just type in their address and say like my bill was this, what is it going to be when these are done? Whether typing in the address or if they know their flow rate, type in this is my flow rate on the residential and it'll be?
No, there's not any tool on our website that will do that. Uh, if we were going to do that, we'd have to reach out to our website company, they'd have to design something for it to implement it on there. Um, I would say that if they want to know, if they're curious about it, feel free to have them reach out to the city and we can, we can do that math.
Email to the hall?
Yeah.
Good.
So we're gonna be doing a big social media push and?
Yeah, yeah, we, that's one of the reasons why we didn't have it on the ordinance or the ordinance reading on tonight is because we want to be able to share it with everybody in the meeting beforehand.
Very good email address to send all those to.
Uh, you can send it to me and then I, I can get it on Don. Uh, Dee Rouse is, he's our water clerk, our utility clerk, so he would, he would be a good person to reach out to, because he would be able to calculate that.
I just don't want to spam one person's email.
Yeah, uh, and if, if they are getting, if it's getting kicked back, reach out to me, that way I can talk to Craig and have him push those through on the backend. If, if I know they're being spammed, then we can cha- change that.
Can we just include in a social media post, like if you want to know what your rate maybe is gonna change to, send it to this email?
Yeah.
Well, we'll have a range though. I mean, your water, you know, water sewer bills change every month, we'll have a range, you know, if people just look at their use.
But if people can say like, call up and say like, what was my August bill was this, if my August bill was at the new rates, it would now be something else.
I guess in my mind, I think if we give them a range, that the most it's gonna be is five dollars more, unless your usage changes.
One thing that we can-
Confusing if you say something specific and then it really, you know, it's based on usage.
So one thing we can do is we can expand this and we can do every thousand gallons. So from, instead of doing two thousand to five thousand, we can do two thousand, three thousand, four thousand. And, uh, we can have those amounts. And so for those that are at twenty-five hundred gallons a month, they would be between, they would be splitting the difference between the two thousand and three thousand. And tha- that might be a better route if you do that.
Best way to do it is just have that up there.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
Any other discussion on that item?
Um, with the Burke agreement, going back my previous term, it was gonna be a lump sum payment, but they were gonna do a, one big check to pay for their end, and now we're doing a monthly payment for-
Correct.
Thirty years?
Twenty years, yep.
Uh, how does that change things financially for us, having initially thought we were gonna get one lump payment and now we're?
Um, I mean, it changes it a little bit, the interest is what adds, adds more to it essentially.
More total, right, if I did the math?
Yeah, we will get more total over the twenty year span from, from them, correct, yeah. Yeah, so it's, it's the percentages of the interest that really kind of skew things off.
We're gonna get more, but does that include interest in the inflation?
Yes, they do have, uh, they're required by, uh, the same standards that we are. So the SRF, with the SRF funding, we have to have a hundred and ten percent of revenue every single year in order to have that SRF funding available to us, and they will be, they are required to have that as well.
Any other discussion?
Um, sorry, I keep you on the question. Um, do we have enough time to get this out to people in whatever the next water bill? It's gonna get out just to let people know or in the magazine and all that stuff? I know everybody knows it's been coming, but?
Uh, no, because the magazine's come the first of the month and, uh, so that'll be after our next council meeting. Uh, the water bill, you probably already received, you typically receive that on the first or the second as well. Uh, so I think the best way to reach people is through Facebook and, uh, social media and everything along those.
Hit that kind of hard done, make sure everybody knows.
Yeah.
I think we have a little bit more room now that what are new bills, so we'll try and.
And the recent magazine did do a great intro to what's coming, so.
I mean, that, yeah, I mean, that's the other thing, if we need to, if we need to stick a flyer in the mail and send it to every single household, we could easily do that as well.
Um, it's not a bad idea, I know that's time consuming, but.
Yeah, I, I think we can work with the post office and they can actually just automatically include it to everybody within our zip code.
And over three readings, we're talking till the end of October.
Correct, yeah, yeah. So, you know, with that being said, we can put another, uh, more information in following our Nevada's, yeah, yeah.
What we have here, do we have to table those or?
We can make a motion to table till the next meeting.
I'll move to table aside until the next meeting.
Second.
Okay, please vote.
Like click I, is that I to table?
Yes.
Okay, that I'm, it's been tabled. Okay, moving on to reports, Chief Brandis.
I don't have anything, what's your questions?
Marles?
Yeah, I'm just gonna say to Jordan, if you guys want to give me some of those numbers, we can work on some kind of a chart that we can post, I don't have a problem with that. Uh, the October issue of our Nevada is wrapping up this week of content. Um, so that we're usually working almost a month in advance to get those together.
Rhonda?
Um, just a, a few things, I feel like, that's fine, I'll just hold here. Um, just want to let everybody know that Jason Kingsbury is going to be our new Assistant Parks and Recreation Director. Uh, Jason had a stint with us a few years ago and is coming back. Um, and then we've also made a, another couple hires, um, we've hired up Parks and Recreation, uh, labor position. And as long as, as this individual signs, uh, his, his offer, Wyatt Too will be starting for us. He's been working, um, with us since twenty twenty-four, so he, he knows how to run all the machinery, equipment, uh, be a good addition. And then we've also hired a, a part-time, uh, permanent part-time custodian, Angela Johnson, and um, she's gonna be around in city facilities and parks and fieldhouse and helping out with, with those. Um, so some new staffing things, we're kind of playing a little bit of Tetris and then, um, uh, Zach Anderson is gonna be coming over and to the rec side of things. Um, his degree is from you and I in, in recreation and he's gonna be doing more of what I used to do, which is on the side of, of programming and, you know, facilities and things of that nature. So like I said, a little bit of Tetris going on, but, um, we'll, we'll have, have a full slated staff and looking forward to, uh, you guys seeing what we can accomplish with those staff, so I just wanted to, uh, put that out here for everyone. And then the other thing I wanted to address is I know you all received a, a letter from Linda Griffith in regards to, um, Hattery Park and, um, we, Linda is part of the, of the Parks and Recreation Board. Um, and she knows that Hattery Park is, is on the docket to get some new playground equipment and things of that nature. She, um, indicated at the last park board meeting that she thought we needed, um, new, new restrooms at, at Hattery Park and I, I kindly let her know that that just wasn't in the budget at this time as new restrooms are extremely expensive and I had, um, mentioned to her that we could, uh, do some painting, look at some different things to refurbish that within the project of Hattery Park. Um, I have a lot of cool things coming with that park, the restrooms are one of the things that, that's gonna be addressed. And I just wanted to let you all know that, that that is something that is in the works, so, um, just if you have any questions about that, you're welcome to ask, but we have, we have a lot of, a lot of things in the work with that park, uh, to try to improve and, and revamp that, so. I think a little time and patience sometimes goes a long way, so, um, so I think, I think that maybe she may be misunderstood that we weren't gonna do anything with the, with the restrooms there, but we, we have the intent to do that. But other than that, um, I don't have anything else unless anybody has any questions. Right, thank you.
Dylan? Devin, I'm sorry, Devin.
Uh, nothing more to report, I have to answer any questions if you have any.
Less exciting than the last one.
Brett?
Chief, before you start, I can ask, ask you something.
Sure.
Hey, please tell me the score of the, uh, football game on Saturday.
Uh, I think it was sixteen to thirteen and, uh, I would say one in the last two minutes with the deja vu kick of fifty-four yards.
Thank you.
So, but if you had to wait till two minutes to beat us, uh, I'd be worried. So, uh, Ray Reynolds, fire chief, I just wanted to pass out a little bit. Uh, we've been, sorry, I had to step out, we've been working with, uh, Ms. Kevin Martin to, uh, try and get her documentation of her eviction to the sheriff's office. I, I think she mistakenly believes that she has to have a police report to move forward and she apologized for her, uh, outbursts. Um, we've been working quite diligently with her, uh, this whole thing started across the street, uh, in April. Uh, we've given her three extensions, which we would not do for anybody, but we do, I do feel her plight. Uh, the problem is that when she was evicted, three truckloads of stuff from her house came into our downtown building, to the point that we now receive a complaint from the tenants who feel like they're not safe with the fuel load that's in there. Uh, the fire code violations that we've cited today are on the back of that document. So both the building owner and the tenant received citation today of municipal infraction for violating the fire code. And we've also served a notice on the building owner that she has to submit plans within thirty days to install a complete sprinkler system or treat that occupancy like a mercantile business instead of a storage business, uh, that's within the fire code. So that means she's either gotta submit plans or she's gotta remove the hazard that makes it, uh, out of compliance with zoning. Uh, I think, uh, Ms. Kevin Martin would like to share with you, what she wanted to tell you was that her intentions are within the next thirty days is to sell her six, uh, possessions in the six storage units that she has, uh, and all of the items in the building across the street and, uh, take the money and go live with her daughter in Georgia, so she believes she can do that within thirty days. Um, so we'll continue to work with her, but at this point, uh, the safety of the residents up above is a paramount concern for us because that is an, uh, very unsafe fuel load inside that building. So that's kind of the update, I know you're gonna get asked, I know it's been very high profile all over social media with her belongings on the curb. Uh, nobody likes, nobody likes that type of, uh, posting, uh, of your life and that's been her life and her family's life. So, uh, we certainly, Ryan and I have been working diligently with her and, uh, uh, we are trying our best to see if we can facilitate that movement, so I'll take any questions if you have.
Perfect, thank you. Eric?
Certainly sound like a broken record, but, um, two weeks from today, we'll be starting to do, um, the smoke testing across town. Um, we kind of had our kickoff meeting internally today, um, a list of things, so Ray will be reaching out to you to talk about some of that too, but we'll be meeting with city staff here this week to roll out kind of our game plan and some of the particulars, but I know that Marles had posted something in our Nevada, so just a reminder to dump a gallon of water down your floor drain and if you see, we'll be working with Marles to push out, um, notices every day with which region of town we're gonna be dealing with a map and all that, so people kind of know where we're going. It's gonna take us a couple weeks to get through the whole city, um, and we'll be happy to like answer questions as they come up that, but if you do see smoke coming from a drain, let people know, we have a phone number in there, call our office and then we'll come. Um, that way the fire department doesn't have to dispatch.
Any questions? Thanks. Sure.
All right, today we had our bi-weekly SRF meetings pertaining Project A and B over at the West Indian Creek there. Uh, you guys approved that extension tonight, uh, but they are really close to getting wrapped up with that. Had our Lincoln Highway Days wrap-up meeting this last Friday. Um, met with the Leadership Nevada Committee to get a game plan for next year's leadership class. And we had a city school meeting this last week and discussed several items and, uh, felt meeting went very well. Also met with NCRC and Boys Club of Nevada, Boys and Girls Club of Nevada last week and discuss certain situations that, uh, we're trying to work through. At our foundation meeting, annual city wellness meeting that, uh, takes place every year, we do have wellness meetings every single month, safety meetings, but this one is, uh, one that's mandatory for all, all of our staff. Spoke with Dorsey and Whitney regarding a couple of different development agreements, also spoke with them about additional LMI programming or, uh, something that we can do with our LMI funds. Had a Main Street meeting and then Rhonda, Steve and I met with the soccer club and kind of went through our agreement and discussed certain aspects of that as well. Be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
All right, council, anything?
Uh, Luke Ryan is back, if you wanted to ask about-
Oh, yeah, I'm back, I'm sorry guys.
Do you have anything?
I already forgot my question.
Cause Casey's-
What Casey's building?
Is Casey's closing the twelfth street as they open the new one on fifth street?
Not to my knowledge, no, they've not submitted anything to-
They were.
Show that they're shutting down the twelfth street one and they just done work on the tanks to bring them up to, uh, the insurance code for it and stuff like that, so.
At twelfth street?
Yes, at twelfth street, yep. So there, there, there's nothing that I've heard coming down the pipeline about that closing. Uh, my experience, uh, in the, with the Casey's companies is, um, the property is worth more to them uh, running than it is to take tanks, awnings and building down. So I, yeah, I haven't heard anything otherwise.
Good news.
The Malino?
Yeah. Henry and I had coffee with council, uh, Saturday morning, it was pretty lightly attended, but, um, some topics were vacant properties and the need to clean those up in Nevada. I, I think there's probably some enforcement, uh, needs maybe need to happen there. Um, some discussion about trails and sidewalks, uh, that they're, uh, widely used and, uh, the sidewalk conditions could still be improved on those and then, uh, maybe the need for some continuing education for residents on, uh, various city matters that, uh, may be a little difficult to get from a Facebook snippet and could use a little more discussion. But a nice talk.
Anything else, Henry? No, I think that covered it. No, Luke, I and Jordan met about the sidewalk with, with Ryan here a little while ago and I think we're still in progress with that, correct?
Yeah, so we're, I've gotten the last, uh, seven sidewalks that have been redone from, I believe it's two thousand and eleven to two thousand, uh, eighteen, nineteen-ish. And so I'm going through deciding the area and, uh, the mills will go out, did it, uh, and then they'll more than likely start in the spring. So it's a, it's a out-of-biz process as well as, uh, notifying and doing the publications for it and stuff like that. So it does take a little bit to get it going, especially since we took the hiatus of it.
So who do you want to mention that?
I just want to mention the water, that we talked about the hard water to soft water.
Yes, yep, we're- Oh, yes. Yep, we're looking into that.
Okay.
Yep, thank you.
Anything else for council?
Call up with the council next month, first Saturday about Cobra, I believe, is the mayor and myself.
Uh, I spoke with some business leaders today and they want to do a decorating contest on some of the light poles uh downtown. Spoke with Jordan. Seems like uh if we wrap them, it should be okay. We can't hang anything off of them, but there'll be some changes coming coming weeks. Alright, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
All in favor?
I agree.
Second.
Okay, second. All in favor? Adjourned.